All right, I call this meeting to order at this time of the City of Sweetwater, Mayor and Board of Commissioners for February 6th. We will have our national, or our Pledge of Allegiance, followed by the, our, let's have a prayer first, Lord's Prayer first, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. All together stand for the Lord's Prayer.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thou will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread. Give us our trespasses, and we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. The might of the kingdom, the power, and the glory of the Lamb. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jessica, I'm glad you played, you had an almost same blockbuster here with us today. And of course, we all are glad that we're absent Buster. And Buster meant a lot, I'm sure, to everybody here. We will miss him from our presence, but we will get to see him again. One day, I hope, we'll all be able to see him again. So, roll call, please.
Mr. Hughes?
Here.
Mr. Moser?
Here.
Mr. Richardson?
Here.
Mr. Stutz?
Here.
The minutes of January are in your packet. Is there a motion to accept those?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, in discussion. All favor I?
Aye.
Pose likewise, motion does carry. The recorder has a report on distributions in December.
General fund, $12,817.04 to Wex billing, that is fuel for all departments, including the Board of Education, which reimbursed us for their portion. Employee and employer portions of retirement for the month of November posted in December to TCRS were $25,455.93. On page two of the general fund, we paid $8,000 to East Tennessee Security Solutions. That was a replacement of the cameras up at Englewood Park after vandalism. Further down that page, $7,311 to Nightlight Displays, that was our new Christmas lights that were made this year. Towards the bottom of that page, our stormwater payment to Sweetwater Utilities Board, $9,256 for the month. Page three, 911 appropriation from the budget to Monroe County Emergency Communications for $20,675. Just below that, you'll see $5,285.46 to Sweetwater Hospital. A good portion of that was Fire Department physicals, and that is from their line item budget. Page four, we made a movement of a GovDeals deposit, it's a transfer of $3,405. That was something that was sold out of the LEA fund, so we received it into our general fund and then moved it out. And I just wanted to point out that that was a transfer, and you'll see the other side of that transfer in the LEA report. Sweetwater Utilities Board, payment for street lighting and the city utility bill, $30,533.06 to Sweetwater Utility Board. That's everything in the general fund. State Street Aid didn't have anything significant on expenditures, neither did the drug fund. Tourism Fund, we had a busy month in December. We closed out the mural grant, so you'll see several dispersments related to that. $3,000 to Adley Gagnette, $4,350 to Jen Houston, Scottville Belsor, $2,200. All of those are related to the mural grant, which of course, we got reimbursed for most of that from the grant. And that didn't post until January, so you'll see it on the next month's report. We also bought an enclosed trailer, David Melbartis, $3,950. That's to move the inflatables that the city purchased last year. That enables us to be able to store them in the trailer instead of having to unload them in City Hall, load them back up, move them somewhere. Every time we have festival, we're storing those in the trailer. Fund 126 of the LEA fund, there was not really anything very significant there, other than those transfers that I mentioned earlier for $505.29. That's on the debit side, you'll see that coming in to the asset account. And then solid waste, our garbage contract for the month was $22,949.70. Any questions?
There are motion to accept.
Make a motion for approval?
Aye.
In discussion. All favor I?
Aye.
Pose likewise, motion carries. We will open public hearing to take comments on four items. First, we have the LP RF grant project to improve the pool, resurface the track and the tennis and pickleball court. Is anyone here present to make a comment on our application for the LP RF grant? Now we will take comments on ordinance number 912 to amend Title IV, ordinance number 1012 to amend Title IV. Which is pertaining to, which one does that pertain to?
Title IV is municipal personnel, that one was making some adjustments in roles, and it seems like there was something else in there. It was mostly human resources stuff, to make what the city handbook says match what's actually in the code. And we went over it in the workshop.
Yeah. I can't remember all these ordinances. Okay, so, anyone here to make a comment on number, ordinance number 1013 to amend Title Finally, is anyone present to make a comment on ordinance number 1014 to amend Title 11? Okay, if not, this public hearing is closed. In old business, we have discussed ordinance number 1009 in several meetings, and it's back on the agenda for the first reading. Anyone enlighten us on what that was?
1009 was the beer ordinance, and you all have discussed it in several meetings, and we have tabled it, talked about it in the January workshop. It's going to allow a definition for microbreweries, which we have had a couple of inquiries about starting microbreweries, so it adds a definition to that, so that it would be allowable. It does not allow festival permits, but it does allow people to approach us if they go to the TAC and get a special liquor license, that they could also sell beer. So it amends those beer regulations. And you all asked for it to be put back on the agenda this month.
Alibis, is that what you were satisfied on in the workshop? That you was, are you okay? Everybody okay with that? All right. Roll call, please.
I must add one.
Yeah, I'll put that on the motion to adopt ordinance number 1009 to amend beer regulations on first reading as presented in our workshop.
Second.
Second. Okay, motion been made in second, roll call.
Mr. Hughes?
Aye.
Mr. Moser?
Aye.
Mr. Richardson?
Aye.
Mr. Stutz?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Is there a motion on ordinance number 1012 to amend Title IV Municipal Personnel, Chapter Two and Chapter Four on second and final reading?
I make motion for acceptance of ordinance number 1012 to amend Title IV as submitted.
Second.
Motion made in second, roll call vote.
Mr. Hughes?
Aye.
Mr. Moser?
Aye.
Mr. Richardson?
Aye.
Mr. Stutz?
Aye.
Motion carries. There are motion to approve ordinance number 913 to amend Title 14 Zoning and Land Use Control, Chapter Eight, on second and final reading.
I make motion to approve ordinance number 1013.
Second.
Motion made in second, roll call vote.
Mr. Hughes?
Aye.
Mr. Moser?
Aye.
Mr. Richardson?
Aye.
Mr. Stutz?
Aye.
Is there a motion to approve ordinance number 1014 to amend Title 11 Municipal Offensive, Chapter Three, to add Section 11-303, this disorderly houses, on second and final reading?
Still moved. Second.
Roll call vote.
Mr. Hughes?
Aye.
Mr. Moser?
Aye.
Mr. Richardson?
Aye.
Mr. Stutz?
Aye.
Motion carries. In new business, we have ordinance number 1015 to accept title of the Beegs House on first reading. We've talked about this, and we've all agreed that if it were offered to us, that we would take it. And I think that's the title, deed's been worked on now, according to John, is that right?
They are retaining an easement during construction, so I don't know whether that means we'll go ahead and execute the deed, or we'll wait until construction's complete before we execute it. But basically, the ordinance is allowing the mayor to sign, saying that we accept ownership of this property.
I think we need it.
I make motion for acceptance of ordinance 1015.
Third.
Motion made second, all roll call vote.
Mr. Hughes?
Aye.
Mr. Moser?
Aye.
Mr. Richardson?
Aye.
Mr. Stutz?
Aye.
Motion carries. We have a new ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission to rezone a partial of land. John, you want to, John Campbell, you want to?
Sure. In your packet, you guys have a math attachment there, the proposed rezoning, the property's approximately 51 acres off of Monroe Street and Highway 68. It touches both. The property owner, Dr. Rex Ball, he's here to, you know, represent it or answer any questions you might have. But just so you guys can see, this might help you get a little bit better visual from what you've got in your packets, but this is basically the entire parcel, the 51 acres. And this is how it's zoned currently. It looks like a little over half of it is zone R1, which is our, basically, single-family home, which is all, you know, as far as residential. R2, this is what's currently R2, that allows for single-family duplexes, it also allows for multifamily, which would be apartment complexes, mobile home courts and things like that. I'll let Mr. Ball speak more to that about, you know, what his plans or intentions may be. There's also a couple of small little slivers here. This is the gravel drive that goes down to the old Valley Printers Lot. That is encompassed in the C3 zone, just that little gravel drive. And then there's this little bitty point right here off of Commerce Street, that's also kind of gets caught up in this C3 here along the highway. But essentially, what Mr. Ball is asking is for all of this to be zoned R2. So it's currently split, R1 and R2, with just a couple of little pieces of C3, but he's asking it all to be rezoned R2. Is that clear?
Got a question, John?
Yes.
Does R2 not allow for low-income housing?
Um, R2 allows for multifamily homes, so apartment complexes are a part of multifamily homes. They, you know, my understanding is that zoning does allow for apartments, which would include low-income apartment complexes. If that's what a developer, if that's what their site plan included, and that's how they chose to develop it, if it were zoned R2, then it's allowable, it's permitted.
But it'd have to go before the Planning Commission, right?
The Planning Commission just has to do with the rezoning. Now, if they submit their site plan to develop it, my understanding of that is to not approve a site plan, it would be something that didn't line up with our subdivision regulations and things like that. But we could not deny that based on it being low-income housing. They could build low-income housing there, or they could build a different apartment structure there if they chose to. We couldn't turn it down just based on the fact that it would be low-income. That doesn't conflict with our subdivision regulations.
So if it's rezoned to R2, they can do anything they want to.
Well, the possibility, it opens up the possibility for that. To answer your question directly, yes, it would open up the possibility for low-income housing. Now, I don't know that that's the intention, Mr. Ball may want to speak more to that, but the R2...
Well, part of it's already there now.
It is. There's, you can look and see, not quite half of it, but a big portion of it currently is R2, which would allow for that. If someone chose to put an apartment complex, be it, you know, private funded, you know, low-income, I don't know. But it's there now, but this is the R1 that kind of backs up to, I don't know how much you guys can see based off of this, but this is R1, this would be like the backside of your Willow Creek, this is the junior high would be down here, the high school. So this is the R1 section that he's proposing or asking to be changed to R2. This is the R2 section that the mayor, you know, referred to currently. It is R2, and if there was multifamily homes, if someone submitted a site plan to develop that with apartments, then as long as they adhere to our subdivision regulations, it would be permitted. It would not be permitted in R1 as it sits, but if it's rezoned, then yes, it does open up that possibility more.
Rex, you're not going to turn it into low-income dwellings, are you?
No, sir, no, no. My, see, I have a right to restrict it in the deed. That would be, of course, forthcoming. And the restrictions that I will put in the deed are against mobile home parks, nursing homes, daycare centers, public utilities, facilities, not the water lines and sewer lines, but the housing, warehousing, public parks, educational facilities, and churches, cemeteries, cultural facilities, civic clubs, bed and breakfast, short-term rentals, and I think it's 11 items. Those will be incorporated into the deed. I don't want to see it. You know, I don't want the neighbors having to, you know...
So Rex, you are going to create covenants?
Yes. They will be in the deed.
Okay.
Because I, personally, don't want it.
So the covenants will be in the deed before you sell the property, or...
At the time that I'm selling the property. You know, if I were selling used property in that deed, in that instrument, the document, the restrictions are going to be in it.
I didn't understand that, Rex.
I'm sorry?
I didn't understand that, what you said, license.
That they'll be in the deed?
Yeah.
Yeah. They'll be, as I said, if I were conveying it today to the mayor. Okay? The deed itself will have these 11 items incorporated in it as a restriction, what you can't do there.
I understand.
Even though it's permitted in R2, I don't want to see it, I don't want the neighbors, you know...
So is the, at this point in time, the only reason you're wanting to go R2 is to make the whole piece of property the same?
Multifamily dwellings, multifamily.
But the density of R2 is greater than the density of R1?
Yes.
So basically, you're wanting it R2 to create more lots?
Well, no, not necessarily lots, but what I'm, what I want is to be able to have facilities out there as, like, townhouses that are, if you will, put together.
Okay.
You following me?
Yes.
You see, not to allow any of this stuff that I've gone over, those 11 items, I'm going to restrict that. So it would be multifamily dwellings.
Okay. What was the gentleman that came in? It was off of the other side of Monroe Street, Ermac?
Yes, Tanner Ermac. Same one off of High Street, he also rezoned off of Monroe, that he's got to split R1, R2. Now, his, he did, he did submit a preliminary site plan on his where the half of it facing, I believe, Highway 68 would be single-family homes, the side of it, the half of it or third of it facing Monroe was to be, I believe, duplexes, townhomes, something like that. But I can't remember the number of units, but he kind of, he had a preliminary site plan kind of showing how many units would be, would be in there, and what would be built out there. But it was similar situation, yes, split zone R1, R2.
The only thing that Ball meant about this is the R1 that is probably slum. If we zone that to R2, and we get low housing going in there, backed up to Willow Creek, there's going to be some upset people in Willow Creek.
Well, we can't deny that on, on that aspect. I mean, it's already there, R2's already there.
I'm talking about R1.
Well, R1 is...
The one that touches...
Willow Creek.
Willow Creek.
The one that's being requested. I understand your intent of restricting the deed, but I don't know if that still, if that stands up if it's, if it's changed to R2, because R2 will be what's, what's on our zoning map, no matter what the deed says.
Yes, yes, but see, I have that, right. I can restrict property, me as the property owner. And when I convey it, I can put those restrictions in it. John's, John's...
Yeah, our attorney's not here tonight. But if you, if you sell me that property with those restrictions, and it becomes my property, and I turn around and sell it to Sammy...
No, it follows right on.
So it's going to follow from now?
It's going to follow from now, yeah. It'll never be allowed.
Down there.
Do you have anybody arrested yet, now?
No.
Full disclosure.
I don't know who enforces that. That's just my question there is, you know, as far as the planning department goes, restrictive covenants that are in the deed, I don't, you know, I'll go and check everyone's deed when they buy a parcel of land and put a home or something on it. So I'm not sure if that's something that, you know, in the title transfer would have to be conveyed at that point, when the deed changes hands. So I don't know who tracks that or enforces that.
Okay. Planning Commission approved this, we spent about 30 minutes on it during our Planning Commission meeting. Rex was here to answer all the questions, and that's why the Planning Commission brought it forward to City Board to approve it. Do I hear a motion?
I got another, another question. Rex, do you, because I, I want to make sure that we're, we're looking at this in, in all angles, is, is this something that you need us to act on tonight, or is this something that we can, we can verify with John Cleveland?
Oh, yeah.
That deed restriction?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
And then we'll, we'll take care, if, if we can ask John about this and get it verified?
Yes.
I'm, I'm assuming we can take, take action on it in workshop, in our, in a couple of weeks. Would you, would you be okay with us verifying that with John Cleveland?
Oh, yeah, sure.
What are, what are we verifying?
I, I want, I mean, what I'm verifying is if, if that, if that deed restriction does carry based on what, what Rex is, is trying to do, then just for my personal reference, it gives us options moving forward if, if that actually holds true. I'm not saying it don't, I'm just saying, just a clarification. And if, if Rex is okay with us waiting that two weeks to ask John this, this question, I, I would like to have that answered, and then take action on it on the workshop. If, and like I say, I don't want to laboriously hold Rex up, but I, if he's willing for us to, to double-check that...
Oh, yeah, I don't have any problems with that.
We'll clearly take action on it.
Yeah. But you all clearly understand that, what?
Yeah, and, and Rex, I've known you a long time, and obviously, I, I know that you, you want the best for Sweetwater as well, and that's why you've taken these actions of, of the deed. I just want to make sure that I'm in total understanding.
Sure.
But I mean, I'm, as I say on the Planning Commission, I'm, I'm going to vote, but if, with your permission, if we could table it to the workshop?
Yeah.
And...
You're talking about two weeks, right?
Yes. Is that, is that the math?
Yeah, you want to table it two weeks.
Want to table it?
Okay, I'll make a motion to table it.
Okay, all favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Rex, thank you for allowing us to dot i's and cross t's.
Oh, I understand that, I respect you for it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
We, we will take, take action.
The recorder now has a financial report for the quarter ending December 2022.
So the report's in your packet, I'm going to hit the highlights, I'm not really going to go into detail on grants unless y'all want me to, because we just did that in the last quarter, and there's not been a ton changed since then. In the general fund, we are trending a little bit higher than average in both property tax collection and sales tax collection. I really thought we'd see more of a slowdown so far, and we have not, so that's a positive. Expenditure-wise, our department heads are doing a great job. The second page of that report goes through some highlights. Total revenues is 42% have been received to date, which is a little bit higher than average, the reason it's not exactly 50%, even though we're halfway through the years, because property taxes tend to come in in February. So probably after next month, you'll see that number jump a lot for the next quarter of the report. Expenditures are at 44%, so all the departments are slightly under, have spent a little bit less than what the budget says they can have spent at this point. Also, sales tax revenue, we collected quite a bit of sales tax revenue. To put it in perspective, as of December 31st, we've collected about 1.5 million in local option sales tax, and the amount last year at the same time was right at 1.38 million. So we're trending a little bit ahead still on sales tax, which we weren't really sure that was going to happen this year, so we're happy about that. Haley will probably have a little bit more info on maybe why that's happening, when she comes up with her tourism and extra report. Property tax revenue, again, at 45%, which is not unusual for this time of year, it's a little bit higher. Last year this time, right now, we're at 876,000, last year we were 797,000, so we're doing right where we need to be. State Street Aid, our revenues to date are slightly less in gas tax, and I'm sure that's just because of fluctuation in gas prices, people have kind of budgeted that a little bit harder. Don't, don't forget, gas tax is not measured per cap, I mean, sorry, it is measured per capita, so it's based on our population, and what the central server population is, not how much money is actually spent in Sweetwater on gas tax. It's not as specific as sales tax is. Drug Fund, we're about where we normally are this time of year. Tourism is about where it normally is. The hotel rental tax revenues might be slightly less than what it was last year this time. So that's something we're going to kind of watch and see if we need to adjust those numbers to any for next year's revenue estimates. Sanitation, we're right at 50%, right where we should be. So I feel pretty good about where we sit right now. Our funding balance has dipped just a little bit because we had slightly less revenue than expenditures in November and December, which is very normal, since most of our property taxes come in in February. So we'll see that coming in. I also have an email for each one of you all, and I wanted, I had so much stuff laid out in your packets, I wanted to do this separately so you would pay attention and know exactly what this was. You'll just pass it to us now. So tomorrow morning, Red Stag will be sending out their first package. It will be their actual first package that they have packaged out the Sweetwater facility and are sending out. So they called us this morning, and they said, hey, we want to throw something together, because they weren't exactly sure when that first package would be going out. And they're very excited about it, so we're going to take the big giant scissors and the big red ribbon, and we're going to go out there tomorrow morning. They asked that you all be there at 8:45, because they do require, now that they have inventory in the building, we actually have to sign a nondisclosure agreement that we're not going to tell anybody what we saw inside the building, so we have to get there just a few minutes early. But they've invited all of you to come at 9:00 AM, and sit and talk, and, you know, get an update, and we're all going to send out that first package together, so that's kind of a neat thing, so I want to make sure to highlight that for you all.
Y'all have a second, we'll a little later make the time.
I know. I should have liked that, because we could have one at noon, that would be great. I think they're ready to get on.
I think it's about 1:00 or 2:00.
So, that's the financial report. If anybody has any questions, I do have a line item in front of me if you have any specific questions.
Take a list of who's going to be there.
They did not say we had an RSVP, so if you get up in the morning and are able to make it, then great. I kind of already told them you were going to come, so. I, I already kind of said here, amen, so I hope you're good. I already told them you were hoping there.
If I don't, we'll send a vice mayor.
Send someone. And that's it, unless y'all have any questions.
Any questions? Thank you, Jessica. In the workshop, we discussed appointment, appointing the city attorney as the Title VI Coordinator to ensure the city is to be in compliance with Title VI, which is required for federal funding. We talked about this in the last meeting, and we... And we decided that John Cleveland will be the Title VI Coordinator. All in favor? Or a, a motion? I think it's pretty well. Do you have a motion?
Make a motion for, excuse me, for John Cleveland to be the Title VI Coordinator.
Any discussion? Everybody clear on that? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All the likewise, motion does carry. We have had several presentations for the Parks Master Plan. The feedback has been incorporated into a final document. Is there a motion to adopt this document?
I make a motion to adopt Master Plan, Park, Rex?
Second.
Is, they made second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All the likewise, motion does carry. We have a resolution to apply for the FBRF grant with matching funds. Is there a motion?
I make a motion when we apply for the grant.
Okay.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All the likewise, motion does carry. We have a vacancy on the library board and the board recommends Gail Sensiboy to fill the vacancy. Is there a motion that we fill the vacancy on the library board with Gail Sensiboy?
I make a motion to fill the vacancy.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All the likewise, motion carries. We will now have some reports from our board. First, Tanya on the library board. Tanya, Tanya? Speak in Spanish.
Um, I just wanna let everybody know what we've been doing for twenty twenty-two. So this is January to December. We coordinated with City Hall for repair of the eight back unit number two again. We've coordinated with Parks and Recs a lot, with cleaning gutters, working on the people level roof leak, repairing closet leaks, repair of light fixtures, delivery of mulch for the flower beds. I've attended eight of the Main Street meetings, six City Department head meetings, nine City Commissioner meetings, nine County Commissioner meetings, one County Commissioner Town Hall meeting, one ribbon cutting and the groundbreaking for Red Stag fulfillment, as well as Red Stag Retirement Breakfast for the dinner bell. With the Coe River Regional Library Support and state and federal book grants, we received eight thousand nine hundred and twenty-seven, which purchased five hundred and seventy-two new books for the library. With the ARCA grant, we were awarded six thousand eight hundred and seventy-four dollars, worth of local match of seven hundred and sixty-three dollars. So we were able to replace seven computers, two handheld scanners. We brought in a book scanner, a monitor and two backup hard drives. I've completed all the E-rate forms, four seventy, four seventy-one, forty-six for internet discounts for E-rate. We completed the Title VI survey, standard survey, public library survey, which is data collection for the library. We received three thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars in private donations. With three thousand nine hundred and twenty-five, it was unrestricted, so there was no requirement for it needing to be spent. Um, I've completed one day of orientation in Nashville and two one-week-long trainings at Montgomery Bell State Park for the twenty twenty-three Public Library Management Institute. It's a program for those library directors who do not have a Master of Library Science, which I do not, so this qualifies you when you graduate. In addition, the director and or staff have completed one hundred and forty-two hours of training in accordance with library standards. All staff have completed the core competencies to become Tennessee Certified Public Library Staff. That's a new requirement that started in twenty twenty-three, or twenty twenty-two. Mira Patel has attended eleven of the Main Street meetings and three of the ribbon cuttings for new businesses. We've completed fiscal inventory materials of the library's collection. We provided library brochures, bookmarks, Book Bag Tags, four hundred plus, um, individuals at the High Five and School Supplies in Madisonville, two hundred plus at Sweetwater's National Night Out. We provided a booth and summer reading program kickoff at City's Blooms Bluegrass and Barbecue. We held five summer reading program events at Engelman Park in June with one hundred in attendance at the first event. And that was a stormy day. Tim was up there mowing that day. It was stormy, but we had a hundred up there. We have library visits for twenty eighteen's and nine teachers from Sweetwater Junior High School. We hosted a daily summer school camp kids for a total of four hundred and fifteen student visits and fifty-eight teacher visits in June. The library director staff and toddler steam built and painted a dog library for the city's new dog park. If you haven't seen that, your kids had blast with that. Um, we have been short-staffed every single month due to illness, COVID, training vacations, and I had three custodians resign. I had a long-term custodian. He had been there for seven and a half years, Nathan Arwood. He quit in March, um, due to low pay and part-time hours, and it took us forever to get a new custodian. We do have a new individual, very talented. Morgan Haydon was hired in November, and we got her because she's working on the master's degree. So we got her for the part-time. Library volunteers had included high school service learning, Tennessee Promise, Cleveland State Service Learning, Friends of the Library, homeschoolers, court order, community service, in-s much volunteers and community members. They provided us with four hundred and eighteen certs hours. So if you do that at federal minimum wage, that's three thousand dollar value. For the library checkouts, we had nineteen thousand six hundred and sixty-four, and in addition, we had digital checkouts of eight thousand one hundred and sixty-eight. If you've not heard of the Libby app, come ask me about it. It gives you access to free eBooks, magazines, movies. What have I forgotten in there? Cause there's a four. It's only books. Only books. All it takes is just once a year, come to the library, sign up, get your library card, and you can use the Libby app. We had one thousand seven hundred and forty-seven computer users and we had two thousand five hundred and eighty-six who used the free wifi at the library. So we're just gonna shift there. They're not coming in to use the public computers. They're just using our wifi. We had five hundred and four new patrons in twenty twenty-two, and we had thirty-two thousand nine hundred and twenty-one library visits. We had, we picked up with, um, one of the grants, we picked up three hotspots that are circulated. You can actually check them out, take them home. We had a hundred and sixteen checkouts on those in twenty twenty-two. We had three hundred and seventy-one for a total of attendance in summer reading program. And we had one thousand eight hundred and fifteen who came to the library during this year's Halloween. So just to give you an idea how many was there. And if you got any question, there are some of the brochures and all the new, we have a lot of new programming that started. Our Friends of the Library have voted in new officers and, and they're growing again, and they're part of this growth. There's an American Sign Language class that was happening at the library as I left. That is so popular that it's offered twice a week. And that's also if you have access to a free resource online of American Sign Language and any language in the Transparent Language Program. For free.
I got a question. Uh, somebody asked me, and I didn't know, um, do y'all offer GED?
We do not offer the GED, but we can put you in touch with the people who are doing it. And it's no longer the GED because a lot of the local colleges, community college, Cleveland State and the T-CAP, they don't accept the GED. They accept HISA, High School Equivalency, but we can put them in touch with that information.
Okay, I'll tell them to get in touch with you.
They come to the library and we give them the resources. There are some of the resources available online at Tennessee Electronic Library as well, some of the testing programs and test prep for high schools too. ACT, ESAT, SAT.
Do you, do you think there'll ever be a, a time that when we could offer that at our local library?
It's such a small group coming through and they have the resources. It's provided by the state of Tennessee. When we have the American Jobs Center bus that comes to the library, they can hook them up with that program as well. So it's already being offered by the state. So for a need for another group locally, I don't really know if there's that much of a demand, because there's already a lot of resources for them to go to. You have one within the county as well. If you, everywhere at the courthouse in the basement, they have a program there that's helping them to get started with their high school equivalency education as well.
Okay.
So there's a lot of resources available.
Thank you, Tanya.
Have you heard from more than one?
Just one. They just asked me the other day if you could get your GED at the library. I thought, I don't know.
American Jobs in the Bus, they can hook them up with that. So would you help them?
Okay, next we have the illustrious Tourism Director, City Clerk Haley Isabel to present our annual Main Street and Tourism Report.
Hey. Um, okay. Well, hello, everybody. Two thousand and two was another successful year on Sweetwater Main Street. We added a full-time Main Street Director in Josh Isaac, who's always been a great addition to our team. Um, we welcomed seven new businesses downtown in two thousand and twenty-two. We did lose some, but it, it equals out, because as soon as we lose one, it's already occupied and you may not see it yet, but you will going forward. Um, so we do have more new businesses coming in two thousand and twenty-three. Um, we also held a total of eleven events last year, um, on Sweetwater Main Street, four of which were brand-new events, the Spring and Fall Fashion Shows, Breakfast with Santa and the Pet Pictures with Santa, which were all very successful events. Um, from a number standpoint, a total of sixty thousand two hundred and forty-six people attended and visited Sweetwater during those events. And to further break down that number, twenty-three thousand two hundred and seventy-seven were local to Monroe County and thirty-six thousand nine hundred and sixty-nine were outside of Monroe County. So we get those numbers from Monroe County Tourism. They have a program called Air Sage. Um, and that program is a loca- location intelligence telecommunications company, and it breaks down the location signals to collect the data, and it breaks all kinds of numbers down. It's, it's a little bit creepy that they can track you that way, but they can. Um, at the end of January, we submitted our annual recertification report to the state. Each year, we have to complete this report to continue with our Main Street business. A lot of you are familiar. Most of you, Jim, you all hear about this every single year. Um, unfortunately, they have changed that process and added tons more paperwork for us to do now, you know, just like everything else. Um, but we, you know, we just continue to comply with all the criteria that they lay out for us and adapt as that goes forward. I was not a part of the inception of Main Street. Um, I know some of you were and some of you were not. Um, but if you look back on the last ten years that we, because we've been a Main Street for ten years. So if you look back on the last ten years, you can see what that program has done for downtown Sweetwater. It's, it's a visual that you get from where we were to where we are now. Um, it's made a huge impact here. Because we are a Main Street, we've been eligible for and received grant funding that have made vast improvements to our downtown business district. These funding opportunities would not have been available had we not been a Main Street program. Um, our downtown is sacred. It's, I talk about this all the time, like what we have downtown is special. Um, we should be proud of it. I'm proud of it. I know you all are proud of it. Um, a lot of other communities are trying to replicate what we do here. We go and talk to people all the time. We see it. I mean, just last week, I attended a Metis meeting, which is the Middle East Tourism Council, and I had three people come up to me and say, what y'all got going on in Sweetwater? Um, it's the people, it's you all. It's the people here, um, the community that is supportive. Um, we, we have so much variety downtown in our eateries and our shops and our services and our lodging. It's just really incredible. Um, over the last two years, we've experienced a less than four percent vacancy rate in the Main Street District, and we have to report this number every year to Main Street. Last year, we were closer to zero, but a lot of those vacancies are second and third floor vacancies, or spaces like second and third floor that, you know, are a little bit trickier to develop and put somebody in. So that's a really good number. To add to that, our business owners on Main Street invested over one million, three hundred thousand dollars of their own private monies in their respective businesses last year. One million, three hundred thousand. Um, these monies were spent adding retail spaces, making building improvements, adding lodging, just to name a few things that they have done. This is a huge investment on their part, and it would not be happening if this program was not working. Um, it's crucial to support local. You all have played a huge role in the success Sweetwater has had in the last ten years. So thank you as elected officials for supporting Sweetwater Main Street, and, and they recognize your support. Every year, we have to do a SWOT analysis as we prepare our work plan for the year, you know, the following year. And that's a strength, weakness, opportunity and threat analysis. You've probably seen our big huge post-its on the wall for months at a time. And every year in that meeting, one of our businesses brings up the strength that we have is the support they get from the city officials. They bring that up. So they recognize that you all support this program and they are very much appreciative of that. Um, you know, some of you own businesses, so you know the blood, sweat and tears that go into that. They are what makes this community so sweet and special. Um, they support our local ball teams, the nonprofits, community organizations and events that we have here all year long. So, um, by supporting the vision of Main Street, by your all's support of the program, you are encouraging them to continue their journeys and spend their money here and, and make our place a better place to live. In addition to the private money spent downtown, over a hundred and eighty thousand dollars in public investment was spent in the Main Street District. Um, in two thousand and twenty-two, Jessica's talked about this, uh, with the help of a grant from the Texas Arts Commission, we added another mural to the Main Street District, so we now have three public art displays downtown, and hopefully we will add more in the future. Um, internally, Sweetwater Main Street offers a grant incentive to business owners with our locally funded external sign and oning grant program. Many of the onings and signs you see at our downtown businesses were funded in part by this rolling grant that's offered all year long to almost every business, I mean, every business, anybody that comes into the Main Street District to open a business can take advantage of this program, and almost all of them do, because when you go downtown, you can see the outside of their stores look, you know, really good, and we want that vision to continue. We are also in the midst of a T-Don Enhancement Grant for the refurbishment of the downtown train, train car that will hopefully wrap up in April and give people the opportunity to go in and watch a video of the history of Sweetwater and experience the inside of the train car. One of our most exciting projects, or one of the things I'm most excited about in twenty twenty-three, is something that Josh has started with the high school, and it's a junior Main Street Board. And that program, we will partner with the high school's media class. Their projects will consist of helping our businesses create social media content and do, um, you know, graphic design for them. They will create and host an event of their own one day from start to finish and see what that process is like. They are going to shadow a business owner for a day to see how it is to own a business and what goes into opening and closing the store every day. So, um, you know, they're gonna get, design merchandise to sell. They have a lot of projects coming up. So the opportunity to get our local high school students invested in our community is exciting. It's something that we're looking forward to. And we wanna spark their desire to serve the community here while they live here, but also when they graduate college and move away and are living maybe outside of Sweetwater in a community of their own, that they will be, have a passion to get involved to make their communities better places to live. Um, I finally got the opportunity to attend a couple of trainings last year, something that I've yet to be able to do up until that point. I got to go to Memphis for the Governor's Conference for Tourism and Hospitality and also to Alabama for the World Tourism Conference. And those were great opportunities to hear other tourism professionals and get some great insight on what, you know, how this works, because the tourism position is semi-new to me in a certain capacity. Um, Jessica and I are gonna be able to speak in Boston this year, next month, at the National Main Street Conference. We are doing a session on Eclipse Planning, and we're gonna brag about Sweetwater to everybody in Boston, Massachusetts. So y'all hear about us on the news. It's all good stuff. From a tourism standpoint, in twenty twenty-one, travel and tourism was the third largest employer in the state of Tennessee. Luckily, the impact tourism had in Monroe County was impressive. I think in your packets, is this in your packets, Jess? The snapshot? You've got a snapshot for the, um, breakdown of twenty twenty-one in Monroe County, because the state does it for the county and not city. But to sum it up, we ranked thirty-three out of ninety-five counties in visitor spending. In twenty twenty-one, annual visitor spending was up twenty-seven percent from the previous year, coming in at sixty million for the year. What that means for our citizens that live here in Sweetwater is that if it were not for state and local taxes generated by tourism, each Monroe County household would pay two hundred and forty-one dollars more in state and local taxes. So we're able to keep our property tax rate affordable because tourism dollars, and I live here now in Sweetwater, and I certainly appreciate that. Um, another way that I track data is through the, uh, Google Business Profile. We have profiles for Engelman Park, for Main Street and for the Fitness Court. The Fitness Court is semi-new, so we don't have as many months' worth of information for that. But, um, uh, comparing January twenty twenty-two to January twenty twenty-three, both Main Street and Engelman Park experienced an increase in their business profile interactions. And basically, we can look at website clicks, phone calls, people that ask for directions, profile views, all of that information, and it breaks down into a bunch of different categories, but that's just an average of what, um, what I'm seeing. Main Street led the way with a seventy-nine percent increase, followed by Engelman Park at sixty-eight percent. Um, so tourism in Sweetwater is economically important in many ways. As you all heard me say today, tourism dollars play a huge role in helping make Sweetwater an affordable place to live for our citizens. Even more so, our co- Even more so, our hotels and motels, Airbnbs, and businesses depend on tourism to thrive. They need people to stay here, shop here, eat here, and do business here. Their livelihoods depend on small business support, and they're investing on their own tremendous amounts of money to make Sweetwater better. I appreciate all you all do to support Main Street, to support tourism efforts here in Sweetwater. I hope that you can see the value of the investment thus far in the ten years that we've been a Main Street, but we plan to make it even better in the next ten years. So, thank you.
Thank you. Good job, Haley.
I do have one quick announcement. Apparently, Red Snack heard Lamar Hughes' request for a later time, and they have texted to let me know there'll be a meeting at nine-thirty. The Red Snack? With the meeting to start at ten. So Lamar, you must have broken the genie or something. Good job, Lamar.
You got to live right.
Okay. Any questions for Haley?
Haley, did we have any events coming in this year?
Yes, we did. We have one coming up in April, as a matter of fact. Lady's not out, and it's our first brand-new event for the year. So we've never done it. Um, Josh is working on that. It's going to be great. We've already promoted it on social media. We've got tickets ready and... Y'all send your vibes. Yeah, we're going to flamingo in downtown Sweetwater.
Okay. Thank you. Good report. I remember when we went to, uh, New Orleans, me and Chuck and Jane and Jessica. And this is true, we went into, we'd go set at the bar or set at the lounge or something like that. We had name stickers on. And you wouldn't believe that the people looked at the name sticker and say, "I've been to Sweetwater, Tennessee. I've been to the Lily Pad. My wife's been to the Lily Pad. We've been to the Lost Sea," you know.
Oh, and Blaine told us in a meeting last Thursday that the Lost Sea was the number-one visited site in Monroe County. It even surpassed the Charahilla Skyway this year as the Lost Sea most visited. So that's awesome.
Did you get permission to leave?
Yeah, I did.
Okay, thank you. That was a good report. A little long, but... We have a resolution to authorize the application for a CDBG grant, which will help fund the community center project that we're all looking forward to. Is there a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
In discussion. Uh, only discussion, I would ask, sound a question. Are we still looking good on everything, Sam?
As far as as S U B, you know, moving out in in September, um, they're they're still still on schedule.
Okay.
Yes, as a short end.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Oppose likewise. Motion does carry. We have a resolution to honor Commissioner West at this time. Do you want me to read all of this? We got a card from the West family. They wanted to thank the board, the mayor, all the city employees for the floral arrangement to the family, the covered dishes, our thanks for the display of administration and respect for him as we made our way to the cemetery. "We were overwhelmed, and we will never forget you." Thanks, and may God bless. This is from the West family. Resolution. Whereas Billy G. West was born in Sweetwater, Tennessee on January fourth, nineteen thirty-four, and spent his life in service to the people of the city of Sweetwater. His life in politics started early with service on the student council at Sweetwater High School, where he played football and baseball. On August sixth, nineteen fifty-one, Buster married his high school sweetheart and wife of sixty-six years, Sarah Walna Hicks. Buster and Walna operated Valley Electric and Plumbing Supply in Sweetwater for over forty years. Prior to the Buster working, he worked at Oak Ridge Complex for eleven years. Buster served eleven years in the U.S. Army National Guard, two hundred and seventy-eighth Armored Cavalry Regiment. He was a lifelong member of the First United Methodist Church of Sweetwater. Whereas Buster was a long-serving member of the J.C.'s, participating and helped to build the baseball field, which is now at Sweetwater Junior High. He coached Little League Baseball for seventeen years, which later became the Dixon Youth League Baseball. It is now known as Buster G. West Field. In his first year with J.C.'s, he was named statewide J.C. of the Quarter for his efforts in making and starting the Toys for Tots program. From nineteen sixty-six to nineteen eighty, Buster was the color coordinator for Sweetwater High School Football on WDEH Radio. Buster also served as a board member of Sweetwater Valley Bank. There are many years of banking changes, ending with the current Regent's Bank. Whereas Buster West was first elected to the Sweetwater City Board Commissioner in nineteen sixty-nine, where he served twenty-nine years, first as Commissioner of Parks and Rec, later as Commissioner of Fire Department, as the City of Commissioner, also of the Industrial Development Board as Commissioner of the City Department, Street Department, and on the Sweetwater Utility Board from nineteen eighty-three to nineteen ninety-nine. Whereas Commissioner West was the first park and rec commissioner. Commissioner West was responsible for many improvements at Ingleman Park and the construction of the Recreation Complex on Steric Street. He later served as Fire Department Commissioner, Street Commissioner, and Vice Mayor. Whereas, as Street Department Commissioner since two thousand eight, Buster West replaced many sidewalks throughout the city and paved many miles of city streets, renovating and beautifying downtown with public property, including the remodeling of the gazebo, parking area, and landscaping. Commissioner West got the Highway three-twenty-two project started with Governor Elickton and lobbied to the, to get Sweetwater a second interstate exit sixty-two. Whereas Commissioner West was instrumental in developing the industrial park in cooperation with the Industrial Development Board on which he served, with the first state building in the park to recruit new industry back in nineteen eighty-four. Whereas Commissioner West lobbied for improvements at Ingleman Park and constructed and construction of the rec complex on Steric Street. Whereas, during Commissioner of the Fire Department, Sweetwater had a ISO rating reduced from six to five, which many said was impossible. Whereas Commissioner West served over thirteen years of Chairman of the Sweetwater Museum Board and oversaw oversee the refurbishing of the Sweetwater Heritage Museum with the help of his Street and Rec Department and community volunteers. Whereas Commissioner West was named Citizen of the Year in two thousand twenty-one. He passed away peacefully at his home on January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three. Whereas Commissioner West especially loved the girls at Sweetwater City Hall, the guys of the Street Department. He was very much loved by all of the city employees and community volunteers. He was the city's institutional memory. He is and forever will be greatly missed by all of us, all the commissioners and all of his friends. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city of Sweetwater, Tennessee honors Buster West for his service and dedication to the city and to the people of the city of Sweetwater. And that this resolution be spread upon the minutes of the city this sixth day of February twenty twenty-three. Side, Mayor O'Lo. Very, very good tribute. Is that going to be placed in the minutes of the city of Sweetwater? Good. Duke to Commissioner West passing, we as a board have a resolution to declare vacancy. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to declare vacancy on Board Commission.
Second.
Motion made, second. Uh, I will open this up usually. Maybe if you have something fond memory of Buster, something he said, or something like that you'd like to share with us. I'll start out by, I was first elected in two thousand nine, right after I went into office. One day Buster come by, he sat down, and he said, "I just want to talk to you a minute." I said, "Okay." He said, uh, "I will give you a couple of pieces of advice." I said, "Okay." He said, "First of all," he said, "in a meeting," he said, "don't you ever try to embarrass me, and I'll never try to embarrass you." I said, "Okay. That'll work." And he said, "Number two," and I don't forgot this, I still remember this. He said, "In doing your job, do the best that you can." And I've always had that before me. And I always think of Buster, when when that, I I think of that, it came from Buster. So Buster, even though we political didn't agree on everything, but he meant a lot to me, and I I liked him. I really did. Anybody else got something they want to share?
The only thing I can say is after the resolution being read, I think somebody needs to make a motion, and we we get busy because it's going to take us two lifetimes to catch up with with everything that that he accomplished. But in in talking with people and and at his service, I I got a chuckle or, uh, out of, and you said the same thing. The one thing you knew about Buster is his his daughter-in-law said it, his grandson said it. When he came at you and he said, "Let me talk to you a minute," you you knew that, one, he was going to share a word with you. Number three, he was going to ask you a question that you already knew the answer to. And number four, he would, he and you would stay there until he got it worked out. And that within itself, just the the mutual respect and the sharing of of his knowledge and his love for the city is is phenomenal and will be phenomenal for for many, many years to come.
Thank you, Sam. Anybody else got anything?
He was a man of integrity, of high integrity. I didn't know him long, and there's some things that we talked about that I wouldn't want to repeat. Buster, but I I often have thought since he passed, I could live to his age and still not know as much as he's probably forgot about the city of Sweetwater. When he would start talking about stuff, and I had him right here in my ear, I was just, I was amazed a lot of times that he could pinpoint, not just a year, he would pinpoint the month and the day most of the time back in nineteen sixty-nine. And I was like, you know, this man, when he passed, we lost a, we lost an asset, but, uh, you can't take away from him gaining what he gave. I'll miss him.
Thank you, Alan.
I went to see Buster the night before he passed away, and he was he was bad shape that night. He was still giving them dollars, he was up and down the road. And, uh, I got up and when I left and started to leave, I got him by the hand, and I said, "Buster, I love you." And he said, "Well," he said, "Judy's going to get jealous." So he he was still, he was still Buster.
That's Buster.
Everybody saw him next morning.
Okay, Jess, you got any? Okay. All right. So we've got a motion of second that Commissioner West passing has left a vacancy on our board. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Oppose likewise. Motion carries. We can make an appointment if the board desires. First of all, I would like to say that Nancy Baker has expressed a thought that she would like to serve out Buster's term and maybe run, and chances are, she's going to pick up a petition, run for reelection. I have talked to Richard, uh, and the boys in some areas. They are a hundred percent for Nancy filling in the vacancy for Buster. Richard said he would stay. If we appointed Nancy to the board, I don't think it's a secret, he's said a lot of times, when Buster goes, I go. That's, we've all heard that. But anyway, Nancy, uh, she will accept the job. She will work at the job. She wants what is good for Sweetwater. So I'm bringing her name up before the board. Is there a motion?
I make a motion. We allow Nancy to fill that position.
Is there a second? No second. So we're going to leave with vacancy for the, uh, for election, till election time?
And, Mayor, in looking into this, um, I also had had conversations with with Richard and every single man in the Street Department. And I also had a conversation with with Nancy as well, her and I. And based on the consensus of of talking with with everyone in the Street Department and conversation with Nancy, um, with the the election being within six months and not us, and not having to appoint someone, I personally just feel like it would be better, based on the consensus that I got and the timeframe, is to allow the citizens of Sweetwater to make that appointment. Um, and seeing that we we don't have to pay for an election, um, my recommendation would be that we allow the election to fill the position.
Sadly, I can't understand why in October we had two months and this election coming up that we wouldn't have to pay for when we appointed Commissioner Stutz. What's changed your mind so abruptly from three months and wait five months till election, and we couldn't wait three months back in October?
We would have had to have paid.
No, it was presidential election in November.
But we, it was, it would have had to have been a special election for our our campaign to fill that position. I'm just saying, I'm letting, I'm letting you know, I'm letting the community know why I'm taking this position, and that's why.
So the motion fails due to a lack of a second. So Richard, you heard it all?
Yep.
Um, I'm flabbergasted.
So do you need, I make a motion that we allow our election to to fill the position.
Do I have a election in June?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Second. Second.
Special election, well, that'd be, that's our normal election in June anyway. Okay. All favor, aye?
I had discussion before vote.
Yeah, I'll open it up. I didn't think there'd be any.
That's fine, that's fine. I just wanted to, to make it, to make my thought process on it known, is before a name was even brought up, I had already came to the conclusion within myself and my own thought process, that if we weren't required to have a special election to fill the vacancy, that the election in June should be allowed to take course and do that. So it has absolutely nothing to be, to do with the name that was brought up, because I, I love her, and I think she's a wonderful lady. But before any name was brought up, I already had my decision made that if I were asked or given the opportunity, that I was going to allow the election process to take place and leave it in the hands of.
But you couldn't do that back in October.
It wasn't an option in October without waiting for an election.
Yes, it was.
Well, it wasn't, but.
They had plenty of time to get out and get a petition up and submit it to the Election Commission before the election.
It would have been, it would have had to been a special city election, so.
Well.
And that we would have.
Election, election.
That we would have had to pay for using tax parol.
We wouldn't have to pay for it.
Okay.
I done checked it with, with Brown, and he says, "We've got a presidential election," or whatever election it was, I guess, presidential, but that's okay. So the motion has failed, and we'll move along.
You, you need to take a rope, or a vote for, for that second. It was just discussion.
Okay. Roll call vote.
What were you talking about?
Well, no, um, well, don't have that.
Sam Moser made a motion to allow the election to decide and determine the, an hour and second of it.
Yeah. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Hughes? Commissioner Moser?
Aye.
Commissioner Richardson?
Aye.
Commissioner Stutz?
Aye.
Commissioner West also served as Vice Mayor. Is there a motion to appoint a remaining Commissioner as Vice Mayor?
I moved to appoint Sal Moser as the Vice Mayor for the remainder of the term. Second.
Made a second. All favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose likewise, motion goes carry. Okay, I think it's got pretty well everything. Anything else we brought up for the board?
Nine-thirty tomorrow morning at Red Stag, start of town.
All right, we are adjourned.